All right, we're going to actually start today with our public hearing on D-207 and N-Serve 2025-2026 budgets. And so if we could state the purpose of the meeting, hearing, and I'll hand it over to Mary Kalu.
Certainly. We are required by law to host a public hearing on both the District 207 budget as well as the N-Serve budget. Notice of this public hearing has been published in the Daily Herald thirty days ago. It then also requires us to put the budget on public display. It is then available not only on our website, but in each of our schools, as well as all of the libraries that serve the district. The purpose of the public hearing really is to provide community a chance to comment on the budget while it is still in tentative form. Tonight, the N-Serve budget is on for approval because as a joint agreement, that budget is required to be filed with the state by the end of August. The District 207 budget will be on as an action item in September because it was required by law to file with the state by the end of September. So now, the purpose of the public hearing is to really turn it over to the public to see if there are any public comments specifically on the tentative budget.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Are there any questions from our public right now in regard to our N-Serve budget? Okay, it looks like there are no questions. All right, and so we can go ahead and adjourn the public hearing. We don't need to do a vote. So now we'll go ahead and call to order our August meeting. So if please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. It used to be that way. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much, everybody. Please, you take the role.
Iker.
Here.
Forsterling.
Here.
Hartwig.
Here.
Henigan.
Here.
Jaime.
Here.
Patrice.
Yusuf Abramson.
Here.
All right, with that, we will move on to communications, and we will start with an update from our superintendent.
Just a couple of things. Welcome, happy August, and welcome to the 25-26 school year. We're super excited to be here in this room today. We held our new teacher orientation. Kick off to that awesome week. The energy in the room was palpable. We had, I think, thirty-five of them. And actually, my office is right next door. Throughout the day, after having spent some time with them, got to hear and see the energy in the room. So we're super excited to welcome all of them. All extremely eager to work with our students, excited to be here at Maine. Everyone in this room worked really hard to get us to this point, so I just want to make sure I acknowledge, obviously, from the hiring process, the selection process, but also preparing for this week and next week as we welcome our new staff. Thank you to all of you, our principals, our district office staff, for all of that work that went into it, including Jodi O'Caris, who's not here with us today, but contributes to so much to being able to get our teachers up and running. So thank you. And also, just so that you know what's happening between now and the start of the school year, later this week, we meet with all of our admin. Our ten-month admin started back today, so it's great to have everyone in-house. And next week, our opening day, and I think I mentioned that to you already, Monday, the eleventh, from eight to nine fifteen, will be at Main East. Good luck if you can join us and just kick off this school year with your presence. Understand that you can't, but if you're able to, that would be great. That will be an opportunity for us to update all of our staff. Once again, we're bringing everyone in. We're closing all of our schools and prioritizing our time together for about an hour and a half to give updates and give a go over our goals for the year. One last announcement. As you know, we are going to be embarking on our strategic plan, so our superintendent and advisory council, we're going to really work with that group on getting their feedback. And that meeting is on August twentieth, so I'll send that information to you so that you're aware, and also the roster for that group, in case you have anybody else in mind who could be a good addition to the team. And just once again, thank you so much for your service and your support. The school, we really appreciate it and excited for a new year.
Thank you so much. All right, any updates from our board members at this time? All right, and just to reiterate, as Tatiana had said, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, right?
To everyone as we start this academic year, so very excited. I already feeling good energy. So thank you, everybody, for all the work you put in to get ready for this academic year. All right, with that, let's go ahead and start with our finance committee update. And Kelly, if you're okay to give the update.
Yes. Yes, with that, on July twenty-first, there were no public comments. The Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Mary Kalu, highlighted the executive summary of the district budget for 25-26 school year. It's projected the budget will have a surplus of about ten million, largely due to savings from retirements and staff turnover and nine million dollars in investment income. Overall expenditures will increase two-point-two percent in all funds. It's anticipated that the medical premiums will increase mid-year about fifteen percent. However, TRS rates will remain the same. The district has agreed to contribute to Tier Two Administrators 403B, the amount of the TRS contribution on their salaries above the cap. We are also looking at paying down the unfunded I, M, R, F liability. In addition, the district has built capacity to fund the five-year facility master plan. We have not received details on the receipt of our Title II and Title III funds. They have not been released by the federal government as of yet. The budget will be adopted on September second and filed by the end of September. The Director of Fiscal Services, Patty Alvarez, outlined the N-Serve budget for 25-26. District 207 is the fiscal agent, will proceed in that budget, audit, and provides office space. Total budget is one-point-seven million. Twenty-six thousand, six fifty is designated to support regional CTE program initiatives across our five partner high schools. And this budget will be adopted at today's meeting, filed by the end of this month. The ICIC, which is the Illinois Council of Instructional Coaches, which was developed several years ago by District 207 staff, provides professional development. The group has now grown, which necessitates a larger space than the district auditorium, provides deliberate instruction, so they began renting space and needs to charge for professional development. Non-D-207 staff are involved in the organization as well, so they are requesting to close their convenience account. District Legal Council has been consulted and agrees that if ICIC becomes a five-oh-one three and the board approves it, the district will distribute by check the balance of forty-nine thousand and seventy. That's all. Oh, my apologies. Oh, sorry. Two technology contracts were reviewed. How do you pronounce it? Jamn, J-A-M-N, software is our mobile service monitoring system for the district capital devices. The one-year renewal is twenty-five thousand, six seventeen. Clear, which is the district resident software, we're buying an additional license for the new director's dual services, which brings the total three-year contract cost to ninety-six thousand, two thirty-nine. They will be filed out today.
Thank you so much. All right, if we can move on to our policy committee update.
Thank you. Our policy committee meeting was held on July twenty-first. Members present included Rebecca Henigan, Lori Hartwig, and myself. Call to order was taken at three-fifty-two PM. There were no public comments. Mr. Daggers, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, conducted a review of the Illinois Association of School Boards' press quarterly policy updates. Following an internal administration administrative review, the recommended revisions were shared with the District 207 Policy Committee for discussion and feedback. The proposed changes reflect recent updates to federal and state laws involving legal guidance and the district's commitment to continuous policy improvement in alignment with best practices. Revisions include updated language and procedures, changes to policy titles or numbers, added provisions to protect personal information, and expanded categories related to student absences and equal education opportunities. These policy updates are scheduled for a first reading by the Board of Education at its meeting on August fourth, that's today. There being no further business to come before the committee, I adjourn the policy committee at four-thirty-six PM.
Thank you so much. All right, we will now move to public comments. Before we begin public comments, I do just want to kind of go over our procedures. So if you are interested in making a public comment, you should have filled out the bottom of this blue sheet. There are more available at this table over here, and submitted them to our Director of Communications, Brett Clark. When you are called upon to speak, please do state your name, your address, and the topic. Just so you all know, all your remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole, not to any specific members, or to any person who is not a member of the board. All comments will be limited to three minutes. During this time, the board and administration will listen to the comments but will not respond to questions. If questions are posed, an administrator will follow up with you if they've included their phone number or email address as part of signing up to speak to the board. Again, the bottom of this blue card, okay? So at this time, I would like to start public comment and call up Carol Hill.
My name is Carol Hill. I live at one-eleven South Lincoln Avenue here in Park Ridge. It is a pleasure to meet with all of you tonight, and I give you thanks for your dedication and commitment to the students in District 207. I really appreciate all that you do and all that you've done. I'm here as the Senior Minister of Park Ridge Community Church, as well as a parent of three incredible biracial children, one of whom just graduated from Main East High School after being allowed an intra-district transfer. We are zoned for Main South, and she attended Main East. I'm concerned that a student who has repeatedly shared instances of feeling discriminated against and harassed because of her race has been denied the opportunity to transfer to another school in the district. While I understand a policy that would outline that students should attend the school for which they're zoned, I also believe there must be exceptions to every rule. Whether this is because of their own educational needs, race, gender, bullying, or any other situation where a student is no longer served by the school for which they are zoned, I believe we must be attentive to how they can best achieve a high school education. Our duty as community leaders is to listen to our children. Jocelyn Nguyen has experienced racial discrimination at Main South High School, and that, I believe, has been negative enough that continuing to matriculate there is no longer tenable. While I wasn't personally present for any of these instances, I believe her when she says that they've happened. Just as we're about to include a policy around teen dating violence, I hope that when students come forward, I hope that we will listen to them and believe them. And if they no longer feel safe in the school for which they are zoned, we must provide another way. I believe that Jocelyn deserves and should have a quality, robust high school experience in a school where she can feel safe. I don't believe that that is any longer the case or possible at Main South High School. But I'm a both-and kind of person. I think that it is possible to allow an intra-district transfer and still commit as a Board of Education, as community leaders, as high school administrators. All of us together must continue to work to address all the issues in our midst, including making our schools safer for every single child who attends. That work continues regardless of children transferring from one school to another. And I promise you and pledge my support in doing just that today, tomorrow, and in all the years to come. Again, I thank you for listening and for helping meet our kids' needs.
Valerie Halston.
Hello, my name is Valerie Halston. I live at two-fifteen Lake Avenue in Park Ridge. I'm here to read a letter on behalf of Action Ridge. Dear members of the D-207 Board of Education, thank you for your commitment to working with students and their families to ensure a high level of educational experiences. Thank you too for listening to the concerns of the community in order to support students in their various needs as they attend high school at a vulnerable time in their lives. We are grateful to and applaud the District 207 equity statement. We recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse community. We value these multiple and unique identities, abilities, and voices as assets. We commit to an equitable and inclusive learning environment. District 207 and Action Ridge align with this commitment to equity and inclusion. Action Ridge is a local social justice organization that focuses on promoting inclusion, respect, and equity for all members of the community, including students in all our area schools. We are coming before you because a member of our community in Action Ridge, Felicia Nguyen, has a child who has endured hate speech and racial slurs in the school setting. This has resulted in her not feeling safe in school. Ms. Nguyen has not been able to find relief for her daughter from these situations at Main South High School. By requesting an intra-district transfer to Main East High School, she has offered a simple remedy. We are asking the Board of Education to support this intra-district transfer so that her child can participate in a more equitable and inclusive learning environment. Like to Stup 207, Action Ridge supports a safe, equitable, and inclusive learning setting for all students. Thank you for embracing the needs of all students, and especially the needs of Ms. Nguyen's daughter at this important juncture. Sincerely, Nan Carson, she's the Chair of Action Ridge, and Liz Swanson, the Vice Chair of Action Ridge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Jocelyn and Felicia Nguyen.
Thank you for allowing us to come. I'm Felicia Nguyen, Jocelyn's mom. This is Jocelyn.
Hi.
We have a few things to say. Okay, should we let it over?
My name is Jocelyn Nguyen. I'm a current student entering my junior year. I've experienced many cases of racism at Main South High School. I've been called a monkey in the hallway by a student. I've been called a racial slurz by girls from Main South, heard the N-word from a boy in my class and hallways. I've been excluded from PE activities in my freshman year. I'm expressing my feelings of being unsafe and unwanted at Main South. Although I'm not in the zone for Main East, I have requested intra-transfer, meaning I am able to transfer even if I'm not in the zone of the school. I've been through pain and suffering, only to be told that the transfer request was not valid and that they'll make a safety plan. Being told those words felt like I was not seen or heard. It was just another day, another day, and it wasn't serious, and I felt horrible these last few months from rejection and shrink of the transfer. The school, however, repeatedly violated my rights, has kept me in an unsafe environment and has caused my mental health to significantly decline. I have spent nights crying, not wanting to go to school. Yes, I have friends at Main South High School, and yes, I have a great support system. I still do not feel welcome in the school. They say high school should be the best years of your life, but those two years have felt the worst I've ever experienced. I would never let anyone go through the same thing I am currently going through. Please grant me this transfer and let me have the best two years of my life at Main East. Let me be a part of the school that will accept me as me and not as a disease that's not meant to be touched.
As Jocelyn said, about her experience has really touched our family. We moved here for a better life, and it has been really hard to see my daughter go through this. And we've experienced racism within our family. My uncle was murdered by a Klansman in Grove Hill, Alabama, two thousand and one. So we know it also well front and center in our lives. And I had to speak up the parole to keep him within the system. And he became a pastor, and I told them to honor that. He needs to stay and complete the consequences of his actions. So this has been like a trigger to our family, and we're trying to get away from it. And moving to a school that's less than five minutes away with diverse children, we feel that will be a positive for Jocelyn. So we thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public comments. We'll move on to our monthly status of finances with Mary.
In your board packet is the May and June financial statements. Both two months, we did not have a July those education meeting. You can see on the revenue side, we have fully received the budgeted revenue that we are projecting. I will say that the June numbers, these are the cash basis numbers, that will enter into the audit next week, which will like convert that to a full accrual basis, so there will be some minor changes in the financial reporting, which you see the audit. Expenditures are also in line with what we budgeted. Saw a significant jump in June as we did our summer payrolls on our firm-up employees. I will entertain any questions that anybody has on either the board or the financial reports.
Any questions?
I might. I know we got a question somewhere. I'll get to it.
All right, with no questions at this point, there is no instructional services update, so we will move on to a monthly update on FOIA requests for June and July.
Since our last meeting, we've received six requests, and we have either filled a request or in the process of choosing.
And we have a PACE transportation update, including Venter passes and communication. That's Mary.
So I'll take the first half of it. As you've been aware, over the last several months, we've been trying to work with PACE on a solution. So where we've landed is a recommendation that's included in the budget to provide free PACE passes for students on AP waiver and those that qualify for free reduced lunch and also live a mile away from school. So we've worked it out with the bookstores where we will be loading quarterly revenue, quarterly amounts on the PACE passes, and the students can use them between eight o'clock in the morning and eight o'clock at night to get to and from school. We believe that this is the best solution for providing that barrier, which is something that we've been studying over the last year and a half. It takes away both the cost and distance barrier that were identified when we surveyed our families. Now, I'll turn it over to Brett, because the second piece of that is kind of a communication plan to make it easier for people to understand how PACE regulations is implemented.
So we've been working with the schools to be able to share that information out to our families, so that's one piece of the puzzle. We'll also send out information from the district around this so that they understand what Mary talked about, where if you are on free reduced lunch and you live a mile or more away from school, this is available to you. The committee that we had pulled together, one of the other things that we noticed was it's very, very difficult to read the maps that PACE has put out. And so, we've been working with our designer, we have an outside designer, to create maps and timetables that make more sense. I've spent more time on timetables and maps than I ever thought I would, but the good news is I understand them much better now, and I think we have much better maps and timetables that our parents will be able to understand to show where those coverage areas are for PACE. As we've shared with the board, it's not a full coverage of the entire district, but a large portion of the district is covered, especially if families, students are willing to walk a little bit to get to the stop. So those will be pushed out this week and put on our website. And I think that covers where we're at with the PACE, but Mary and I will answer any questions as you head.
Just to be clear, so the students that are eligible for it will have to go in and sign up, or they don't just get preloaded?
That's correct, and we're also put a plan in place where the information, we'll be able to track that, not by sharing the names of the students, but to share the numbers. So to be able to share with the board or administration, this is how many students, you know, took advantage of being able to utilize that. And then we'll also have that a total cost.
So same thing with that, like if you load it with that they're going to use it every day and they don't use it, then we'll sort of readjust that at some point, or?
Yeah, so let's say you come in for the second quarter and you still have fifty dollars left. Will only load the amount up to be able to be used that quarter?
Perfect.
Do those PACE cards be used right in all of that transportation on these PACE classes?
Yeah.
And is there any plan to like check in with students to make sure that the program is going as planned?
Yeah, so because it is a new program, we are sure that the counselors will be checking in other students, both in terms of how it is working. We'll also, we promoted this as another benefit of the fee waiver application and free and reduced lunch process, so we're hoping that it encourages more families that need this type of benefit to apply. So as you recall, we also expanded the benefits we offered for those families with AP tests and dual credit, waiving those fees as well. So we're really hoping that this takes away the barriers for those families that are struggling in our district.
And maybe to bounce off Kelly's question, because I thought we talked about this maybe in committees, so the PACE cards are available eight to eight. They're able to use that like for like jobs, or like if they used it more between those times?
Correct. If they use, I mean, it is used on a PACE route between those hours.
Okay, they're good to go.
So there is a potential that it wouldn't necessarily be used to get to and from school, but that is why we chose to load the amount per quarter based on the number of days in that quarter.
Yeah, okay, all right. And I guess I would also think about like internships and things like that. That's great. Okay, thank you.
Practices, extracurricular activities.
Yeah, all of the above.
Because what was the time frame on?
Believe it is eight, it might even be seven.
I was going to say it's probably earlier. Doing the timetables, some of those routes start earlier.
Correct.
Yeah.
So it's camping at eight?
It is eight PM. It's one that ends, and I also believe it is only a Monday through Friday pass.
And that's something we could revisit too, because I feel like as parents, maybe some of us who have extracurricular sports, we know that eight PM is not necessarily a time that folks get out.
So some of those rules PACE sets.
Oh, got it.
So it's a student, it's called a student discount fare, so that fare is only available from PACE within a certain range.
Okay, okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions? If none, we'll go to the strategic plan update. Brett Clark?
Yeah, so you guys will be getting updates monthly throughout the year around where we're at with strategic planning, so we wanted to share, this summer, we sought volunteers to be on steering committee. That's a fifty-member group that will help, they'll meet four times during the year, help bring in the information that's gathered, be able to look at that, and then to help with a draft plan that'll ultimately be brought back to the board in the spring to approve. So that'll include board members. Sheila and Dean are the representatives from the board. Students, parents, community members, teachers, support staff, administrators are all represented on that group of fifty. So we've got our fifty. We tried to balance that between three schools and the attendants areas and all that to get a good mix within that group. So that will be set for our first meeting in October, I believe. We're also going to be pushing out a survey in September where we're going to be getting some feedback from all of those groups that I just mentioned, as well as doing some focus groups as well. The focus group members, for the most The focus group members, for the most part, we may have to fill in some pieces here and there. We had a lot of people volunteer to be on the steering committee that were not selected. We just had an overwhelming response in several of our groups. So those folks are the first folks we're going to go to for our focus groups. And then if we need to fill in, we'll talk with the principals about helping us out with some, with some folks that they think might be good for those focus groups piece. So that will happen also this fall. And I would entertain any other questions that you might have. We're sort of in the planning stages right now as we get rolling, but we'll keep the board informed about anything that's happening along the way each month.
How long has it been since the district did a strategic plan?
A strategic planning process like this?
Yeah.
I would have to ask someone like Mary Kalu or George Daggers.
So the original posters, I recall doing them in the 1990s.
Wow. So we're due.
Yeah, a full process like this where we're really engaging the community, I don't think, has been done for quite some time. So we're excited about that and learning from the community on what they want from the schools.
Can I just ask, what was the difference between this planning and the planning for the referendum? Like, I mean, it seems, I mean, sort of similar, but not like?
It's similar in that it got community input. The referendum was obviously focused on facilities exclusively, where the strategic plan is focused really on the entire structure of the district.
That's exactly what it's like in first meeting.
Yeah, for an example, one of the pieces that'll come out of this process will be a portrait of a graduate. So what, what skills, abilities, that type of piece that we want to see from each of our graduates. So it'll probably have more of a education focus than just a facilities piece. Good question. But it is very similar engagement.
And when I, when you talk about a portrait of a graduate, I would suspect that the portrait of the graduate now compared to when the last strategic plan could be quite a bit different. And especially, you know, with the career pathways program and, and the idea that not every student is going to take the four-year college path. So it's great.
All right, thank you. Let's see, attendance committee update with Katie.
We stopped sharing.
Summit of Kailene Koya, our new director of student services, presented me tonight. And so as you saw on the Friday note, this year we are doing a renewed focus on attendance. We do believe attendance matters and every day does count. And so this year we really have, we, and we'll talk a little bit about the process we took in, but why I think is important to talk about, why we decided to have this focus this next year. And some of that came from the data, number one, and I love my data. But there also were the voices that we heard from staff, from teachers, from students about the impact attendance has on learning. But not just about learning and academically progressing, which we know that attendance does have an impact there, but it also has a significant impact on a student's ability to connect with the building and to really have that culture and sense of belonging. And so this year we do want to focus on that. It also does help, you know, keep students on track and supports just their overall development. And so this year, our, kind of our slogan for it is every day counts. That'll be in a lot of our attendance information. So just want to highlight that. Like I said, I do like to look at data because I think data really informs some of our decision. And there is both that qualitative and quantitative piece. And so the qualitative piece is really those voices that we heard, the concerns, the impact that chronic absenteeism does have on student attendance. But then there are the numbers. And so what this graph shows us is a comparison between the state of Illinois, the national average, and Maine 207's chronic absenteeism rate from 2018 to 2024. And if you'll notice, Maine is in the dark blue. The state is in red and then the national average is in gray. You do have to take with some leeway 2019 and, well, really mostly 2020 and some of 2021 because of COVID. And so some of those years, the attendance practices were a little bit different, which is why you do see that the chronic absenteeism rate was lower. It is important to remember with chronic absenteeism that it is both the excused absences and unexcused absences that factor into that rate. With that being said, in our district, the area that we have the most significant issue with is those unexcused absences. And we do believe it is important to know where our students are if they're not here at school. And so we really felt that looking at this data, again, along with those voices, is something we needed to focus on. While the 2025 data is not here yet, it just actually was just submitted to the state July, at the end of July here, July 30th, I think was the upload date. We are projected to be above what we were in 2024 with chronic absenteeism. It's an estimated 33% that we were at for chronic absenteeism. So we really want to try to work to address that so that we can start to see a decrease in our chronic absenteeism rates. And so to do that, we decided, we brought together a group of individuals this summer so that we could plan for this upcoming year. And we felt that it was important to have representation from every school and to ensure that we had voices at different levels. And then we will have some opportunity as we implement things for parents to provide feedback in that as well. And so this summer, we had four different subcommittees. There was a tier one committee that really worked on our school life practices. Tier one worked on our classroom practices. We had tier two and three, as well as a communication committee. And we're going to talk a little bit about what was done in each of those committees and what the focus this next year is going to be. To do this, we really took a structured approach. And so we think of this through that multi-tiered system of supports lens. And what that means is that we have the universal expectations. That's your tier one. That is what the majority of students get. But then we also know that not every student is going to respond to that just like what everybody gets. And so then what you have is your tier two, that is your targeted supports. That might be like different kinds of groups that are structured in order to support students with attendance, attendance needs. And then we have intensive intervention, which is your tier three level of support. And I think it's always important to keep in mind that this work isn't just about reducing absenteeism. Of course, we want to do that. That is obviously something that we feel is important to be here at school. What it's really about, again, that creating that culture, community, and really having a sense of belonging so our students do feel welcome in our schools. That is important. And so at the universal level, we want to make sure that we're teaching our students and their parents what is expected in order to report an absence. If you are absent, what does that look like? And then putting into some place some things just generally across the board, across all three schools, so there is consistency. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The targeted support is, like I said, is more of research-based group interventions. And then individuals really looking at the individual causes for each student and how we can support that at the individual level. I'm going to turn it over to Kailene now to talk a little bit more about our tiered system and then some of the pieces we're going to implement.
So nothing like starting a new job a month, a dawn presenting for members time to the board. So thank you all. So attendance for us and for the committee and really the feedback that we've been hearing over the last couple of years is trying to design and develop a ground-up system for attendance. And so what you see here at the bottom, you see heavy in green because that is our tier one universal expectations and responses for all students. As you saw, the trends that are reflective here within our school community, but also nationwide, is indicating that we need to refocus our efforts on attendance, both guardrails and supports and expectations. So as you can see there, and we'll get into each of these boxes throughout our presentation, but we are heavy on the tier one level. We want to set expectations. We want to influence and enhance student skills and habits that we know are, you know, lifelong, that they require post-secondary and beyond. We also want to make sure that we are celebrating students in our buildings and talking about our expectations, incentivizing positive decision-making and showing up because we know like half of that is just showing up. And we know that when, when they're there, our staff can support them to achieve really amazing outcomes, which we see year after year. So our system is really designed to build heavy at that tier one level. And then we'll speak to the more intensive supports that are also part of the system because we know that there are some students and families that require like a little additional scoop of care and support from our staff. So at the tier one level, what you will see is that we have a 95% expectation. So how that translates, sometimes you're like, yeah, you should be here 95% of the time. You're like, okay, I think I am. Like, what does that mean? That means not missing more than two days in a month. Anything below that would mean that you would fall below. And honestly, you hit 90% after two days and then after that, it builds up pretty quickly. And what we know for attendance, the more days that you're missing, the more learning loss happens. And it's a cycle of catch-up that we are hoping to pull our students out of and to feel like they can be engaged in our classrooms and present and accessing all the supports that we offer. So we have a 95% attendance expectation. Our goal is to be very clear and communicative about our expectations so that students know what we expect of them. I think for many years, attendance, especially in the rears of COVID, has been a little bit flexible in ways that maybe we didn't desire. And so we are, you know, hoping to build out communication and expectations that are very clear to our families, to our staff, to our students. What you'll see here in the three categories is that our attendance, the expectation, the programming really intersects with different areas of our building. So yes, we have wide expectations. We also have expectations within the classroom. And what that looks like is creating welcoming environments, which Katie spoke to, building connection and engagement, consistent procedures, and really building up and enhancing that student-to-staff relationship to just talk to you like, what's happening in the classroom? What causes you to not be here? What are things that we can do to help to make you feel more successful in this space together? Because changing habits and cultures take time and that's the only way and the only incentive to that is through the relationships between students and parents. And then also at the tier one level, we are implementing new makeup work guidelines. What we have found and discovered over time is that when absences start to accrue, the makeup work cycle becomes very challenging. And so to create some guardrails, we are implementing a makeup work policy where we want students and teachers to be in communication with one another when they're absent. I think that's a lifelong skill of being able to communicate, hey, I'm not going to be here. And what are my next steps or what do I need in order to come back and come back into the classroom and feel like I'm, I'm ready to go? We also are wanting to talk about how mislearning causes learning gaps over time and how we can create that relationship between a student and a staff member to really build plans for making up the work. We are, we have two additional expectations that kind of fit within the makeup work guidelines. One is that students are expected to make up summatives upon their return to class. However, we know sometimes absences are extended for illness or other reasons where an alternate plan may need to be developed. And that's okay, as long as there is communication that's happening between the student and the teacher. And then also, we have a five-day window of time to recoup and make up any missing work that may have occurred during their absences. So for everyone absent, it's five days. And then finally, we know that there are students that are served and supported through IEPs, 504 plans, multilingual programming, and then also individual plans that will continue to be honored outside of the makeup work guidelines and to, you know, make sure that we're in accordance with the plans that are put into place. An additional expectation that is set forth by the committee that we're going to be implementing is an extracurricular daily attendance participation expectation. So this will apply to anything what we're terming practices, performances, or competitions. So practice, perform, compete. And what that looks like is we do have a daily attendance expectation. Students have to be in the building and cannot miss more than two periods in a day. And if they are, they haven't met the attendance threshold and will be unable to participate that day. So what that means is when we say more than two periods, that means three or more. So that would be more than half of the school day. This also includes being excessively tardy, which means arriving to class more, more than 10 minutes late. But also that would mean three or more times during that school day. We understand that there are special extenuating circumstances that may apply for students that we will work and support them on outside of this policy, as well as reasons such as treatment and college visits that we will not be counting towards that daily attendance expectation for, for sports and extracurriculars. And then there are instances where there are co-curricular experiences. So for example, a music performance that's connected to a course and a grade, those are examples from this policy because we do not want any of our policies to negatively impact anybody's ability or grades and do well in their classes. So we know showing up matters both in and outside of the classroom. We feel like the leverage of sponsors and coaches and directors help to support students in their accountability of showing up and being present day to day.
And this guideline is not that, it's very similar to other schools within the CSL. We did look at all of those pieces as well, what are surrounding districts doing so that, you know, the practices that we're implementing are not atypical from what others are doing.
Can you just explain what the old practice was to know what the change is from that? Like, or was it not really a?
There was no expectation previously, none.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would that be communicated to coaches or how is that communicated?
Yeah, so we have, there's a need for a very comprehensive communication plan because our attendance, our attendance committee and what is coming out of our attendance committee touches every single person within our school community. And so over the summer, for those staff that have been present, so athletic directors, associate principals of student experiences, associate principals for student family services, and the list goes on and on, we have had meetings with them strategically to lay the foundation for that. This week, our 10-month administrators are coming back, so our fine arts department shares. So there is a meeting scheduled for, what's today, today's Monday, Wednesday, to meet with them to talk about the rollout, how we support staff in the accountability that we're, we're putting forth. And honestly, it is a shared collective experience and expectation and really a teamwork approach. So students are going to hear the attendance, supports, initiatives, expectations in their classrooms from their teachers. They're going to get reinforced with that from their coaches and their play directors and their sponsors and from administration. And we're really trying to create a comprehensive approach to that because I think when students feel noticed and they know that people miss them when they're gone and that they're part of a team or an extracurricular or the lead in a play, that matters. And so hopefully that helps build the sense of belonging and also create some guardrails with attendance. Because as you can see, the, you know, our, our chronic absenteeism rates are not shifting in a downward, downward way right now. So our goal is to continue to build the capacity to meet, to talk about it. We're kicking it off at Institute Day with all staff and know that support will be required and needed throughout the year to monitor our systems and how they're doing.
And there's communication going on to parents. It'll be obviously posted on the website. And then like for an example, you know, a student who is participating in an athletic event or is, is an athlete, they do meet for like 24/7 and they talk about 24/7 violation. And they get information about that. And then this would be an added layer to say, these are the expectations. And nothing that we're implementing, we're implementing the, like definitely the first week. Some things aren't starting until the second week of school so that we have time to communicate and teach some of that expectation to our students because there is that shift. So all of these things like that we've talked about so far, like for example, the policy that we have on the makeup work policy. What our board policy is, is that we can allow work for excused absences or students who are suspended. We are allowing makeup work for excused, unexcused suspension, but we want to put some timeframe around it, which that's not outlined in policy. So it's a guideline that we want to follow so that teachers have some direction on what they're supposed to be implementing.
Are our coaches or instructors notified if a student doesn't meet the extracurricular requirement?
It's a great question. So that's something we built this summer. Do you want to explain a little bit about the report?
Sure. We've done a lot of tech integration because I think we know if we don't have data that's at people's fingertips, it will be impossible to implement the things that we're talking about. So we worked with tech to design a report that goes out automatically at 3:05 to each of the sponsors and the coaches. They have to be rostered in our system, which is a wonderful thing. So we know who's participating and what and who the, the coaches and the sponsors are. So they will receive an email only containing the students who have not met the threshold.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so one of the other things that we will be implementing this year, and honestly, this has been part of the system and culture in, in our buildings in various ways leading up to this year, is a social participation expectation and privilege. And what that will look like is for select events and privileges, we will be holding an attendance expectation in order to participate or attend. And that will look like being in attendance and on time to class at least 90% of the time. We are also implementing, we don't want to have any outstanding behavioral responses that are due by students, so we're including that in as an expectation. And for individual circumstances, we do create plans for students to earn those privileges back because our goal is we want to enhance growth and involvement and see improvement. And that sometimes this is the lever to make that happen.
And for some of the events, it's a week by week. If there's an event for that, it just depends. And then some are cumulative. This is where we do see a little bit of difference across the district just because of where each place, district, each building was at. But there is consistency in the 90%. But there is consistency in the ninety percent attendance that is implemented, so.
All right, so I think we alluded to this a little bit in the question around like, how are staff going to know? What does this look like? So we have worked pretty intensely with our tech department and they have come up with some phenomenal things that we are hoping to implement at the start of this year, which is for example, a weekly attendance report. That is a five-day, a post-five-day report of absences. So that way on Monday morning, a teacher can click and see, here are the students that were absent over the last five days. Who do I need to connect with? Who do I need to talk to? Who may I need to create a plan with? So that way, attendance information and data is at the fingertips of our staff. In addition to that, we talked about the athletic and extracurricular daily email that's going to go out. Our systems do not work. We do not have quick and effective access to data to be able to respond both proactively and celebrations like, yes, our school is hitting the ninety-five percent attendance. Or this time last year, here was our attendance and now look at us this year, we're doing so much better. And really incentivizing and celebrating the positive things that our, that our school communities are doing. And we're using our data monitoring tools to be able to do that. So we use a system called Tableau. We also use Infinite Campus, which many of you are familiar with, as both opportunities and mechanisms for us to celebrate and to respond when we're starting to see trends in attendance. And then in addition to that, we are going to respond when we see repeated unexcused absences for students and to really set forth some accountability measures of having them make up the time for the learning loss and to be able to sort of recoup the learning and some of the work that they've missed in their absences. All right, back to me.
And then obviously, we know, like I said before, not all students respond to the same interventions and/or, you know, that tier-one expectation of the things that are put in place. And so we do, the committee did come up with some very targeted things for us to do at the tier-two level. And so the first thing that we're going to be doing in all three buildings, and there were buildings that have done this before. And so this year, we wanted to have it in all three buildings. It's called First Thirty. And so what it does is it looks at any student who had demonstrated within our tier-two level of attendance need the previous semester. So it's really for our tenth through twelfth graders, those that struggled with attendance. And we've put in place this ability to, they get an assigned person that is going to be connecting with them so that they are, check and connect is part of it, so that they can build that relationship, know that there's somebody here that is really rooting for them, identify if there are some barriers to help support the student so that it, there really is that collaboration with them and if necessary with the home as well. Then we also are, we don't have yet a screener identified yet, but we are looking to implement an attendance screener. You can deliver an attendance group, but the root cause of attendance is very different from student to student. It can be social, emotional in nature, it could be academic in nature. There may be some familial circumstances that are impacting attendance. And so we really want to try to identify those so that we can implement the appropriate group-level support to help the student to get them to school. And then, for students who do not respond to that tier-two level of support, we do have tier-three, which is that intensive level of support. So as most of you know, we do have an SAALOC program that is a partnership between us and North Cook and that is an advocate that is in our buildings at East and West. And then we have a similar thing, even though it's not the SAALOC, that we're going to do at a smaller scale at South. But this, we're really going to refocus what these advocates do to focus on students who are struggling with attendance. Because that is a one-on-one support, we will be using the research-based check and connect intervention. They will also help in communication to teachers and to families and really helping encourage and build that culture, community, and just support that the student may need to come to school. And so, we're calling that Engage so that we can get students here at school at that more intensive level. And so for the East and West, that's about fifty students, we can support through that program. Like I said, it'll be a little bit smaller at South just because we don't yet have the SAALOC there. And then attendance contracts is another way that we are supporting and that's at the individual level. So as we talked about previously, there are times that students are able to earn back attendance or participation in certain events if they have individual needs that are going on. And those are done with more individual contracts to get the student to make progress because it's about progress, not perfection. And so we're really trying to work on seeing if we can make some gains in attendance. And then there's individualized interventions and that might look like counseling support and maybe looking at referral to outside supports as well within the community. That's really where the problem-solving teams in each building are looking at the students who are struggling to see what additional supports they need. If they have a 504 or IEP team, those teams will also be looking to see how they can best support the student. And then lastly, the communication plans. Is this me right?
Yes. So our communication plans are intentional and we have thought about, we are only as good as implementing expectations and responses as we are all in partnership with one another. And clarity around that is really important, so that starts with expectations, but then also the progress monitoring piece over time. So we've built out daily communication measures that will happen for parents and guardians. And that is similar to what we've done in the past. So if a student hasn't showed up to school by ten AM and we haven't heard anything from a parent or guardian, we want notification to go out to say, hey, your student hasn't showed up, we're a little worried and kind of, you know, what's happening? And that we send another one at six PM that same day to say like, here's the scope of absences that were unreported for your child for the day if we haven't heard from, haven't heard from a parent. In addition, we have data dashboards that will present attendance trends for our student family services team in order to help support on the responsive side to monitor trends in attendance both positively or declining trends in attendance. Weekly attendance, which I spoke to, is the attendance report that will go to teachers for students on their rosters and that's a rolling five-day report. But at any time they click on that, it will show them five days in the rears of their student's attendance. Bi-weeklies, many of those who are parents in the room have formally received a monthly attendance letter that had grades as well as attendance. We are really trying to focus in on our attendance percentages. So you will see, we've been jokingly referring it to as like a combat bill. You know, when you see your neighbors and you're like, oh my God, look at their electricity and then look at mine. We are trying to visualize the ninety-five percent attendance and then having, you know, your child's individual attendance percentage shared on that, as well as the breakdown by every class. Sometimes we see trends that a student is showing up for six out of their seven classes, but that seventh class they are, they are not showing up to and that's an indicator to us. And we want it to be an indicator to you all to just ask, ask the questions for, you know, to figure out kind of what's the root cause and the trigger so that way we can respond in a timely fashion. So instead of that going out on a monthly basis, we're going to see that go out on a bi-weekly basis just to have quicker response time and communication. We definitely need feedback from parents to see if, is that too much? Is it too little? Is this helpful, is this not? So that's part of our committee plans. But we want to start quicker with more information on the front end. And then quarterly, we plan to send out quarterly updates on attendance because I think we're implementing a lot of things and we're hoping that we see positive outcomes as a result of that. But we also need to be mindful and transparent about the data trends and sharing that with all of our key stakeholders.
And I think one of the biggest takeaways in all of this is really it's a shared responsibility. It's everything from the parent, the student, to every layer here within the district. We're going to be talking to our administrators later this week to talk about like, what is their role and responsibility? We have outlined the role and responsibility for our teachers because if we all are working at it and all the pieces that we can look at, you know, whether that's like we said, like welcoming in the classroom, if there's a student who returns after a while and there is a component where the teacher is not sure, do I give them five days or do I give them more than that? They can work with their department chair and having their department chair really helps support that. So really letting everybody know that this is a shared responsibility. It is a national problem. So, you know, we are realistic that, you know, this is going to take time. But we feel like any positive trend, definitely trend, if you want to come down, sorry, I said up. That would, you know, definitely show that our students are here and present more and able to benefit from all that school environment can offer them. So we will entertain any questions, if there's any additional questions that you have about it. I know it's a lot of information.
I have two things. One of them's not really a question, but just anecdotally, I know of a couple of students that I had heard who would leave school to go to work because, you know, the one kid I know whose family was in need in whatever business he worked for part-time, would call him during the day and say they had an opening, they needed someone to work when he worked. And he'd just leave school. And I sort of understand, you know, if your family's in need or if you'd just rather make money than go to school, the motivation for that. But it's also a very short-sighted thing to do because, you know, by not getting your diploma or whatever, you're only limiting yourself in the future. I mean, are you aware that those type, if this is like a bigger issue or if this is just kind of an isolated thing that I've stumbled on?
So, I mean, it's a complex issue. So I think that kind of speaks to like when we talk about what is the root cause and that's what our student family services teams are trained to help support because not every situation where that happens is the same. Because there could be a student who's like, well, I'll just work because I want to go work. And there could be somebody, another student who really needs to work in order for their family to thrive. So those are different situations and those are students that our teams would work with to identify, are there exceptions that need to be made and a special plan put in place? Or is this something where, you know, we need to say, you know, work with them to see those, the other piece of, well, I understand you want to leave, but let's talk about what are the drawbacks to that and the benefits of that? And so that's really what our teams are trained to do, is to work with students on that because it can be a complex issue.
And then as far as how the school avoidance, how do you, I know that's another complex problem and it's not as simple as just, you know, not wanting to go or...
Right. So that again goes to root cause that, again, there are going to be students who need more support and they have individual plans. So students with school avoidance, sometimes that can be related to trauma, academic challenges, again familial circumstance, there can be a number of reasons why. And so that's working to have an individual plan to support that student. Sometimes that is also referring to outside community resources. If it is a school refusal situation where they require any type of like mental medical help, that can also be a referral there as well. So that's again what our student family services team does try to do is to work with the family to help support them in a way that, you know, best meets the student's needs. Because yes, that is, there is something different. School refusal is different than trumancy, just not coming to school. Those are different issues.
Thank you.
I saw that in the Mains Hall stuff that they tied it to parking. Are the other schools doing that? And there was a typo on one, I think, that said nine periods per semester. My senior was reading it out about. And then the next thing I think said nine days or something like that.
So it's nine days. But parking is only at South this year. And, but that also, South is, we weren't able to implement the football, the social participation at South. And so, South is doing parking and the other two are doing football. The goal is to get more consistency, but year one, we had to kind of start with a foundation of what was manageable. This, just to be perfectly transparent, the size of the football games at South and implementation of five-star, we didn't have enough of a runway to make sure that we can implement that in an effective way. And what we have found is it is better to not implement something and spend time to build it, to do it right, than to implement it and it not be effective. Because that's a lot of feedback we've had. So, that is a goal, but yes, that is, and I know the other buildings, again, depending on who you talk to, have different feelings about parking and whether or not, but that is one of the ones at South this year.
Perhaps you had shown that beginning, that's just students' chronic absences, not teachers' too?
Correct, this is only based on students. We did not do an analysis of staff attendance. But I think there's always, like whenever we talk about attendance, it's just as important for our staff to be here for the same reasons, right? Culture, community, and sense of belonging. That is really what, is really like the heart and soul of our schools. That's what makes it tick, is really to have that, that culture and climate. So yes, that is just students.
To add to that, for the staff, there is communication. They'll send the staff as well. Everybody has to work hours and have to attend to the conference.
Yes, because I understand it's a systemic problem that they're having. So we want that to start.
You can actually bring this right here right now.
Right, students look to our teachers and staff as models, so it's definitely important.
Yeah, it seemed like last year, the attendance, like notes to parents rolled out a little bit more or you got like the notification, is that correct? Was that last, was that new last year or...
That's the daily one if your student's absent, is that what you're...
Yeah, I would just tell you like by class if you were ninety, ninety-five.
Oh, that was, that was the first time last year, yeah.
So has that been received positively or has that had impact, I assume that's why?
Yes, we actually, we receive a lot of feedback on those, on those letters that go out. And so there is communication that is being provoked as an opportunity, meaning parents are responding to those and reaching out to our student family services team. So our goal is to continue to build out communication mechanisms so that a parent is aware and more frequently of what absences look like. Are they getting the expectation or not? This year, we also are including tardies in that because we are seeing sometimes absences and tardies go hand-in-hand too with their timeliness to class. So that will, that's another data component that's going to be put into those letters too. And that will come out every other week.
And then, I guess I was a little unclear when you said football, like, like if someone doesn't go to school, then they can't play in the game or that's not necessarily, or it's about attending the game?
So both, so obviously they don't need the participation. Well, for players, athletes, the rule is across all sports, it's competition, practice, and competing. So clubs that compete are a part of that, but clubs that don't compete, they are still able to attend. But any athlete, the athletic participation does apply. It's the social participation, being able to attend the game and participate and that, that's what we're not able to implement yet at Mains Hall this year. It's just a whole other level that we just need to make sure that, to do it, that we do it right. If anything comes up after, please feel free to reach out to myself and or Kailene. We're happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the, the work over the summer and for the very comprehensive report. I especially appreciate the, the clear communication for everybody. So thank you. All right. Let's see, let's move to, we have a first reading on board policies. George, you want to give us a overview?
So the policies in your packet have been reviewed by the policy committee. They're last Friday, Friday notice. I understand that they have been reviewed by the administration. They've accepted Friday determines as well. Again, they are in Friday notice, opportunity to be in there. There is a policy committee, I should tell you, on the second, it'll be another opportunity to review and ask questions. October, September, so if you have any questions, right, or any questions.
Thank you. No questions right now? Let's do, we have a first reading on textbooks. Sean?
Yes, so in your paper packet, there are three additional texts for approval, first reading. You can see included in that document are synopsis of books. And I'd be happy to answer any question you might have.
Questions? Good choices. All right, all right, with no questions right now, let's go ahead and move to the consent agenda. So, for everyone's knowledge, the consent, all the items on the consent agenda are listed on our agenda that's on the table right now. So at this time, can I get a motion on items A through H, please?
So...
Second, thank you.
This was where I had the question. In terms of board bills or bills dated June thirtieth and then bills dated July thirty-first, what caused the uptick in terms of July numbers? Because June thirty, bills for June were about four million. Bills for July were six, six million, four hundred, so...
Generally, summer construction.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Thank you. No further questions?
I have a good question about, this is just me getting a little better understanding about the overnight student trips. So like, I was just looking at an example like at the Ireland trip. And it says, I don't know, but it says like this one, this trip supports what students are learning in sixth-grade classes, like world geography. Like I guess, I guess I was a little confused, like if that's just a typo or standard language.
I wondered about that, whether it was meant to be ninth grade or something.
And so then, it kind of just led me to the question of like, well, who are these trips for necessarily? And like, I didn't know if we could make that like standard on the form or something like, this trip is intended for, I don't, I don't know how that works, but... this trip is intended for, I don't, I don't know how that works, but I was just curious, like.
Maybe we have different categories of trips and maybe we can separate those out by the things.
So, so and maybe that is helpful. So like we, the trip to Ireland is what we would consider an educational tour, which means it's kind of a foreign travel. It's primarily targeted at the classes that the teacher, it might be a world history teacher that is targeting their students, but it doesn't then preclude a student who maybe isn't taking world history or to take that travel.
Yeah.
Most of the trips are co-curricular related overnight travel. So we'll start to separate those into those buckets.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, I know that in the first page it was there, but then it would be nice to be like, what school this is for? And then if it's open, I guess, I don't know, is it open to everyone in the district? Or is it just, is it just for this school? I don't know. I was just.
Yeah, I don't, I can't tell you if they've done, I know that they will advertise heavily within that school. Sometimes teachers from multiple schools will partner together. But certainly if a student were interested, I do not believe that they would be precluded from signing up for that trip.
Okay. All right. And then I just have one other little question about like, I saw that the flag football was being paid for by an outside organization for the girls' flag football. Is that like organizations be kind of bad or we're just kind of pass through on it?
So the Chicago Bears Foundation has, girls' flag football has exploded, so Main South did well. So I think that a number of entities are sponsoring national competitions or that.
And then is there any regulation about a sport being played outside of a season or that's not really?
So yeah, I mean, IHSA has guidelines in terms of competitions outside of the season, which is why the coaches are involved in, in competitions during that so that they can watch and report to the A D the contact days. And certain, I believe certain tournaments are excluded from the IHSA guidelines.
Okay. I was just curious.
Quick question, because I know we don't want to get bogged down in the consent agenda. In terms of parent chaperones, what type of vetting is done for those, for parent chaperones?
Extensive. They do face law, they do the criminal background check, they extensive. And that is parent or any non-two oh seven.
And part of the reason I ask is because when my, this was several years ago, when my son went with the band to Disney World, they were only allowing certified staff to chaperone. So has the policy changed or was that just maybe the department decision?
They give a department decision.
Okay.
We have allowed non-certified staff to try and contribute. I think, I think sometimes non-certified staff do not want to retire because they have to go through the process of background check.
Yeah, because I was really disappointed.
Sorry.
Some of the teachers they wanted to go to.
So partially why we kind of moved to this process to be able to be more involved in the vetting of volunteers and chaperones and do that. So we'll organize it a little bit differently, but if there are any other components to the application process, if you really would like to see, let us know and we can, it's a form that, you know, the chaperone fills out. So we can, we can incorporate other things if there are pieces that you would like to see included, just let us know. Thank you for the feedback.
And then just, just to note, like, so because this is a new kind of information brought to the board, I know some of these have happened already and some of them are future. So I, so I think.
So moving forward, they will not be able to happen unless they go through the board.
Right.
Where the exception would be if a group of students or a team qualifies for an event that happens. And sometimes it happens for most of our sports where that wouldn't happen. Those we would assume approved, right, regional, state, those, right? We may not have a meeting in between, but other than that, moving forward, that's why you're seeing a lot of twenty twenty six.
Right.
Requests already, everyone's trying to get ahead of that. So moving forward, we'll be able to normalize that and have that as a process.
Great. Thank you for clarifying. Okay. All right, Janine, if you can take the roll.
Hiker?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to the approval of contracts. Can I get a motion on the agreement with Maine Hockey Association?
So move.
Our annual agreement with Maine Hockey, they, so one year agreement, it outlines the provisions that they must follow and the whole powerlessness waiver. And to ensure that they get the, the true and you're working on that.
Any questions from anyone? Take the roll.
Jaime?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Hiker?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion on the dissolution of ICC under Maine Township High School District two oh seven?
As indicated in the finance committee update, ICIC has now become their standalone five oh one C three. So they are requesting that the funds that we oversize, their administrative agent be released to them. With this board action, we will release their now current balance via.
Further questions? We'll take the roll.
Henigan?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Hiker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion on the string instrument bid ratification with classic violins and quinlinin famous? Thank you.
In order to ensure that we have the instruments and this is part of District sixty three, was providing three instruments causing a need for Maine E's to get some additional instruments to have our best chance of having them from the start of the school year. We did issue purchase orders and this is the ratification of the bids that were open. Both of these entities were the roles responsible there.
All right. With no questions, we'll take the roll.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Hiker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion on the J M F software? This is mobile device management software for District Apple devices.
So move.
This is somewhat specialized software. You can see that is the, the number of devices expanded. So that was the bulk of the reasons for about eleven point six percent increase of per incident, per unit cost.
Thank you. Any questions? Can you take the roll?
Hiker?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion on Thomas Reuters? This is a three-year contract for the CLEAR program for District residency.
So move.
We've been using CLEAR for a number of years, which is why we are recommending a three-year contract. We are also recommending an additional site license.
Okay. No questions? Janine, if you can take the roll.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Hiker?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion on the change order for Main South and Administration BP three? This is for access controls and doors.
So move.
Thank you.
So in order to get the work done for the science prep room, we are recommending that the board approve this change order for reconstruction. Reconstruction is at site doing work at doors and access controls and is agreed to do the work on the science prep rooms. This work will be one hundred percent funded from an insurance reimbursement. But we wanted to make sure that we get those prep rooms back up and running. As it is, it'll probably be almost a year before we get everything done. This was a result of that sprinkler head that grows and burst and flooded several classrooms at Main South. That head was located in the science prep room, which took the majority of the damage.
Any questions? You take the roll.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Hiker?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right. And can I get a motion on the one-year extension of the Park Ridge S R O agreement? Second. Thank you.
So Brett and I had been working with Chief Campworth to update our S R O agreement, which is expiring, just expired except in June. Through that process, Chief requested if we could entertain an extension through the Senate Bill fifteen nineteen. When and if that bill is signed, it will have significant impact on such agreements as the S R O. So he asked if we can continue with the current S R O agreement that we have and work through that and update it next year. The work, the agreement is working really well. We have a really good relationship. It's been good. Contacted our attorneys. They feel the same way. We did have a formal conversation about background check and face law. So we would recommend that we extend our current S R O agreement with Park Ridge for another year until we're able to finalize that process.
Thank you. Any questions?
And this one is, it's far more comprehensive than the former S R O agreement.
And this was actually the one that a former board member, Cardinal, had worked very hard on.
Am I thinking of the former, former one?
You may be thinking about the Displanes S R O agreement. Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's a really thoughtful process before my time, really thoughtful. So there are a few things that we would have to update, but nothing that is required to be done right now. So the only piece was the background check and we have the agreement on that. So when was the review of the, of the, this one recently for Park Ridge?
Yes.
It would have been five years ago was when, I believe, Rachel and.
Yeah.
Well, it says that it's like, well, I was just curious, like the annual review of it, like is there?
We, we, we sit down and review it. Like we've met with the chief a week time this year. It's my first year, but I think we've met and talked about the process about five times in different months. So there is a constant review and review of the S R O as the, as the individual as well. So that has happened. We have, actually have a little list of things that we would like to potentially change in the future, but nothing that is required right now. So that's happening and we've also been able to bring both police department chiefs together. And even though the S R O agreement is, is different and they're coming from different organizations and different municipalities, there's a really good understanding in what the purpose of the S R O is, that our buildings, the programming that goes with that and how we connect with the community. So even though the agreements are different and read differently, I think the way we work together is very similar and Brett's been partnering that as well, so.
So then this is a one-year extension and then how long is the contract normally?
Five, well, the, the last one is five years. So you can be anything you would like to. Usually more than a year, so there's some continuity to what we're doing. Three to five years is pretty typical.
There is a clause in there too around sixty days if there's something that's not going well. But we have such a good relationship, I have principals do as well with the police departments. And we meet a couple, three times a year with both chiefs. So that's going really well as well. There's no issues we can.
Our hope is as soon as, if this bill is signed, we'll be able to start working on a formal. We, our attorney was working on through that. We were almost ready to go. It's just that this was something that none of us were expecting, so.
And does this have to go back to city councilor?
It will go, actually, it will stay until tonight for the same purpose. So to see if both us and them agree on extending. If both sides do, then we'll just probably bring this back in the next few months before next year. So we'll be right way ahead of time.
And I would just add that like the, the Park Ridge agreement has also been like centered to like leading some of the dialogue that's happened with the chiefs from Displanes, from Park Ridge. So it's definite, we've definitely been refreshed on it throughout the last couple of years.
I saw the city council when it came before.
Oh, yeah.
Coming full circle.
I know.
Guess what committee you're going to be part of?
There you go. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jaime?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hiker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion on a second reading for textbooks? So move. Second. Thank you.
So this is the opportunity to approve two books, Jessica Mercy, which is an adapted version that we'll be using specifically with our broad students across the academy. And then also an AP Spanish literature textbook.
All right. Any questions? If none, what?
Hartwig?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Hiker?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion on the D two oh seven tentative budget for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six? Thank you.
Tonight we adapt the tentative budget. There will be changes in both grants, some minor updates in terms of salary and benefits. And then a final budget will be brought to the board for adoption and surrender.
Thank you. Any questions here? Whitna will take the roll.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hiker?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion on the D two oh seven administrative district and serve budget for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six?
So move.
Thank you.
This is the final budget action on the joint agreement and serve budget. That's going to be filed with the state by the end of August. It is completely funded by C T E I and Perkins Grants. One is a state grant and one is a federal grant. The vast majority of those funds flow through to the five member school districts.
Any questions? Okay. If none.
Henigan?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hiker?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
All right. There does not appear to be any other informational items? Nothing else? Okay. If not, can I get a motion to move into closed session for student personnel? Review of closed session minutes from the Board of Education meeting on June second. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees as well as other permitted topics under the Open Meetings Act.
So move.
Thank you.
Hiker?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Henigan?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.